Welcome to the Thursday, September 11th, 2014. First edition of the school committee for the 2014-2015 year. This time I'd ask that you stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please have a seat. This time I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. Prior to beginning the superintendent's updates, I would like to acknowledge that one of our new principals is here, Sarah McLaughlin, who's taken over the Frost Elementary School. Pat Weir, as you know, retired, so we'd like to welcome her to the stand. First item under the receivers update is summer graduation. We had eighty-six students who graduated this summer. Four of those students had previously dropped out, but had come back during our extended summer program. And they were able to complete anywhere between one and four courses either online or on-site. So it was a great opportunity for our students to get across the finish line and a lot of hard work, not just from the students, but for their families to make sure that these students graduated. So we just want to applaud their efforts. Second item under updates is we've been awarded the Universal School Lunch. Beginning this year, the Lawrence Public Schools will provide universal free lunch to all students in all grades. As you know, we currently provide universal free breakfast and snack. Several other school districts have received this award as well, including Boston, Fall River, Fitchburg, New Bedford, Southbridge, and Webster. They will get the same service this year as we will. This is all made possible through a provision of the Federal Healthy Home Free Kids Act. So I think that's a great opportunity. It certainly helps the district cut down on some paperwork and make sure that all our students get the nourishment that they need on a daily basis. So that is a great win for the school district. Moving on to updates. This year, at opening day, we welcomed over 2,200 staff at the Lawrence High School Fieldhouse to kick off the school year. Many of you were in attendance. We know some of you are unable to attend, so we wanted to share a short video of how it went.
The reality of Lawrence is positive trends are happening. We've seen our graduation rate go way up, but we have more work to do. In 2011, our graduation rate was just about fifty percent. In 2012, it went up to sixty percent. In 2013, it went up again to sixty-one point three percent. And when the results come out in the next few months, we believe that number is going to go up again. We need our children to get across the finish line. So, basic things you need to know. Do we have higher MCAS CPI in English Language Arts? Yes, you do. Do you have higher MCAS CPI in math? Yes, you do. Do you have higher MCAS SGP or Growth in English Language Arts? Yes, you do. Do you have higher MCAS SGP in math? No, it's the same, but it's okay. You can still clap. And I say you can clap because last year, when we had the highest SGP of any gateway city, as you can see from this chart, we had fifty-seven. That is incredible growth. And school districts that make that kind of growth find it hard to continue to make that kind of growth. But you did it again. We have fifty-seven again, and I fully expect when these results are announced that we will be the number-one gateway city in improvement in Massachusetts. Congratulations.
Okay, is that the end of the video? That's fantastic that we're ending there. Fair enough. Okay, moving right along. We did open the Lawrence Family Academy this year. As you know, the Bruce Group trailers were in disrepair last year, and we had to close those down and demolish those. So as part of the Hennessy Bruce restructuring, we did require to open up some additional space. Lawrence Family Academy was kind enough to help us take on some full-day pre-K and kindergarten classrooms for the Tower Hill neighborhood. And I would ask if folks have time to go visit that building. Registration and enrollment. This year, we did centralized registration. Registration took place at the Hall of the School Committee for K-8. The high school did registration at the high school campus. That will be the case until the Family Resource Center is secured. We do anticipate our Family Resource Center will be secured in the near future. We hope to be in the new space, in fact, by October. We have seen over three hundred new families since late August at the central office to register students across grade levels. There's been some discussions about enrollment in this district, and I just wanted to say that we are again seeing an increase in our enrollment. If you refer to the enrollment trend sheets in front of you, the school committee has, you will notice the difference in enrollment numbers since 2012 at this time of the school year. Now, I want to be clear, we're still cleaning up the data and could share better numbers with you at the next school committee meeting. But if you look closely at the data, in 2012, we had thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty kids. Last year, at this time, we had thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five kids. And this year, at this time, we have fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Now, those numbers do fluctuate and go up and down as we begin to add students and take students that did not report to the district. But the trend is one of increasing enrollment inside of the school system, which of course is going to put pressure on our buildings and class sizes. So it's something that this committee needs to be aware of.
Mr. Riley, oh, two questions, just mine and then a question for Mr. Mariana. How many parents did we, how many students did we enroll at the high school? At the centralized high school enrollment, do you remember?
I don't have the exact number. We can get it to you, though. We can send you an email tomorrow.
Just trying to figure out what, how many new students we're getting at the high school versus on the individual.
The trend I do, did remember looking at last week was there was more students coming at the elementary level than in the high school level, but we will get you all that data. And we can have it furnished for the whole committee if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Mariana?
Superintendent, if possible, when you share the new data with us, could you break it down into grade structures so we can see where the, what the enrollment looks like at each grade level?
I think that would be fun.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Do you, just as a follow-up to that, do you want to grant them to the grade, the exact grade level? Or do you like the grade every year, elementary, high school?
Well, I'd like, what I'd like to see is the individual schools with their grade level enrollments.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things, just as a basic indicator, is we've had some principals call up and say, "Close my fifth-grade class. I have so many kids that I have to go to my neighborhood." You know, the school that's next door to me. But when we look at it, the school next door to them actually has more kids at that same grade level. So we are seeing pressures, especially at the elementary school level. And while we're in the process of cleaning up all the data now, I fully expect that we'll have a real detailed accounting by grade level for you at the next October meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So actually, follow-up.
Yeah.
Mr. Mariana?
Superintendent Riley, as far as the Arlington School, I saw that it jumped almost a little bit more than a hundred students. Is that just sort of a normal influx of students coming in? Or is it maybe that the school is doing better, so, you know, more students are, more parents are bringing their students in that school?
Well, you know, it's hard to discern what, certainly the schools, both of those schools are doing better. But it's hard to discern if those are just general enrollment patterns, where more families are moving into that neighborhood, or they're being attracted to the school. I believe also we did add an extra section at one of the lower grades in kindergarten or pre-K for the Community Day, probably a portion of that. So that will account for a small number of students, but the numbers are certainly going up.
Mr. Mariana?
Mr. Blatchford?
Thank you. If I do recall correctly, Mr. Riley did send us kind of a breakdown of where in the city the population was going up. And that was, I mean, that was the major district where the population is rising, especially for the elementary school level. So it's, I imagine all those schools in that area will be seeing that kind of increase. Not just our communities and our blocks.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So we've had a visitor at the beginning of the school year. Some of you were able to come. Randy Weingarten, the AFT National Union President, came to visit Lawrence and kind of recognized the great work being done by the schools and the teachers in particular. I think we have some videos of her appearance that we'd like to show you.
I just had the greatest conversation with these young ladies. And one of them is going to be president of the United States one of these days.
Hello, my name is Viola Castillo.
My name is Francesca Arias.
And we're here with Randy Weingarten and Mr., Mr. McLaughlin. So today, we just wanted to ask you, what is the purpose of your visit here? And what are you, what is your message to us?
So our visit is, you know, pretty simple. It's, our union spends a lot of time thinking about and acting on, how do we help make a difference in the lives of others? This year, I wanted to come back to Lawrence. And wanted to come back to Lawrence because Lawrence last year did something very special. They said, "We know we have a problem, and we need to change things. And we need to make sure that we help every single child, student, reach her or his potential." In one of the schools I was in, Wetherby, sixth and seventh graders telling me they loved being in school. And it was not like a practiced or prepared speech. It was why and what school means to them in terms of reaching for opportunity. And that makes my day, just like this kind of interview makes my day. And that's what makes the day of all teachers in America. We don't go into this work unless we really love kids and want to help make a difference in their lives. So that's why I'm here today.
Awesome. Something else you were talking about prior to this was, what is your goal for the future in education?
So you can probably say, just as I can, what are the real goals and purposes of education? So we actually put a palm card together that's called Reclaim the Promise of Public Education, about how, what are the strategies that you use to actually help all kids succeed? And so they fall into three kind of areas. So let's say, what our job is, is to help you guys build relationships, navigate your lives in that way, figure out how to trust, you know, your friends and adults, and how to have those kind of relationships. Number two, our job is to help you figure out how to critically think, how to apply knowledge. Number three, we all mess up. So how do you develop the skills of hard work and persistence and resilience so that if somebody, if you mess up, if we mess up, if I mess up, we can pick ourselves up? Every single school and every single public school in America should be a place where parents want to send their kids, educators want to work, and kids want to be. That's the goal. That's the gold standard. And that's what parent engagement can help do. It can also help say, you know, we need to do more in an area. But if parents are not our partners, then we're not doing the best that we can do for kids. But this is a school system that loves its kids. And you see it, all the teachers, and you also see it in kids. And that's what I love about being in Lawrence.
Thank you so much. My name is Viola Castillo.
Francesca Arias.
And we're reporting from the HLD News at Lawrence High School. Thank you.
So I think it was, you know, just a real honor to have the president of the National Union come in. She had thousands of schools or school systems she could have come to visit, but she wanted to come here to Lawrence. And I think that's a testament to the work of the teachers and what's happening inside these schools. I also want to recognize Frank McLaughlin, who's here today, who's been a big champion of, you know, reforming our schools from within. And so we'd just like to give him a round of applause. Thank you.
Just real quick, I think that one of the reasons why the president of the Union came was not only because of that, the success that's happening, but also because of that relationship with the collective bargaining. You know, when people think about education or innovation, a lot of the time they think that also equals no union involvement. And what we're doing here, I think a lot of people are saying, hey, wait a minute, we can have both a normal collective bargaining interaction and innovation that gets us a success. And so, you know, again, that partnership that you and Frank McLaughlin have put together to get this type of attention is just only up to the district, so thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mariana. I couldn't agree more. I think teachers' unions have been demonized in the last decade, and that's really unfortunate. I'm proud that we're an AFT school district. I was proud to be a principal of a high-performing AFT middle school when I was in Boston. My children go to an AFT school, K-8 school in Boston. And I cannot imagine any world where we wouldn't want to give our teachers some rights for representation. And we believe we've created a system under our open architecture approach where, you know, we push the authority down to the school level where teachers' voices are really heard. And we think doing things with people is much better than doing things to people. That is not always shared out there in the world. But that's how we're trying to do business here in Lawrence. Other questions from the committee members? Thanks. Okay. We also are pleased to announce that the United States Secretary, Ernie Duncan, is coming to Lawrence next week to celebrate the progress in the school district. This is, you know, pretty amazing to have both Randy Weingarten and Ernie Duncan in a two-week span come to talk about what's happening here in the district. We're working with his team to finalize the details of the visit. So you will all be receiving an invitation in the next day or two as soon as we get the finalized invite from the feds. But we hope that the school committee can come to that event as well. Next item on the agenda is high school accreditation. You know, the high school has to go through an accreditation process, or we choose to go through an accreditation process. With this process coming up at the high school campus, I've asked an outside group called Big Picture Learning to provide reviews and feedback of every high school in order to assist their improvement efforts. This is basically our chance to have somebody come in and look at the high school before we build our reports for the accreditation. So it's kind of checking our own house before we go out and go through the accreditation process. The support is not limited to just the campus. We've actually asked these folks to kind of do a review of HLC, SES, and Phoenix as well. Big Picture Learning is just a nonprofit that provides professional development of schools to kind of create innovative, personalized learning environments that work with real-world experiences. The organization doesn't provide like a one-size-fits-all approach, but customizes its supports. And, you know, I told Mr. Fiatto, basically, they're going to come in, look at the school, present you with some recommendations, and then you've got to decide which recommendations you like, if any, and which recommendations you don't, and really begin to craft, you know, the plan for accreditation at the high school. With a new headmaster, I think he's got a lot of energy, a lot of initiative and ideas. And I've challenged him to make what, you know, the changes that you need to make to, you know, improve the high school experience for all our kids. So this is kind of a, with accreditation coming up, this is a great opportunity for us to kind of examine what we do and try to change or improve things that may need some work and, you know, continue the things that aren't working well. Any questions on that?
And is there a timeline on what this looks like? So they'll come in, they'll do an assessment, and then what?
So they'll come in, I think they're going to come in in the month of October. And I've asked Mr. Fiatto to try to, you know, the high school has already been working pretty diligently. The teachers and the administration on preparation for the accreditation process. That process sometimes gets pushed back depending on how the teams get organized in different places. But I anticipate that we're going to have some kind of plan from Mr. Fiatto around Thanksgiving, which will kind of set the direction and kind of set us up for accreditation at the high school.
Mr. Chair?
Superintendent Riley, how can we help?
Well, it's a great question, and you may rue the day for asking, but we might actually need you to be on some stakeholder groups to kind of offer input into the process when we actually go through accreditation. They do like to speak to people that are leaders in the community. And I would hope that folks on the school committee would, if they had the time, be willing to come in and speak about the high school and what's happened and the changes. And, you know, so if folks can come and donate their time for meetings, that would be super helpful. And, you know, I know, Mr. Mariana, you, for instance, have done a lot of work at the high school. So just try to continue that process. If other folks want to come and help us. Accreditation process is a heavy lift. There's a tremendous amount of work to do, so we're willing to take all help if folks want to get involved.
I'll just echo that piece and just trying to do the math. Since we have so many Lawrence High School alums on the school committee, then we would take advantage of that insight.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Blatchford?
Thank you. Just for everyone who doesn't know at home, how long does the accreditation process take? And is each individual high school given accreditation at this point? Or is it one big school? And do the smaller high schools like Phoenix have their own accreditation as well?
Okay, so these small schools are not up for accreditation. The Phoenix, SES, HLC, that is not part of it. But we're just kind of extending the Big Picture Learning towards that. The high school itself is in negotiations with the association to see if we want to be seen as one big school or six different schools. My sense is it may actually be a hybrid version because we have kind of installed a headmaster over the different buildings. But some of those discussions are going on inside the school right now, and we're kind of waiting. You know, it's a dialogue that happens with the accreditation team and our school system. So we look forward to giving you a lot more information on this in the coming day. You guys are going to get handbooks and a bunch of other information about how this is going to kind of go down. I didn't want to commit to six different processes or one big school until Mr. Fiatto really had a chance to kind of assess the situation, which is why we've kind of brought this group in and hoping that around Thanksgiving, we'll have a final determination on how they're going to be viewed vis-à-vis six different schools or one big high school. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? So with the recommendations, we get to the point of the recommendations, will we all be privy to those recommendations? Or only privy to the ones Mr. Fiatto agrees to?
No, we're happy to share the whole report with you guys. Absolutely. And then, I mean, this is just a consulting group coming in and kind of offering their advice. And, you know, a lot of it may be great, some of it may, for reasons that, you know, the high school administration and the teachers at the high school know and say, oh, that actually isn't going to work for our community. But we're happy to produce that report for folks. I think that would be really important knowledge.
And can you share a little bit on how we became related or in a relationship with Big Picture Learning? Did they solicit us? Is this something that you've seen at other schools before? How did this come about?
So we actually had a member of their organization donate some time over a summer a few years ago. Mr. Freshman, who's got deep ties to the community, and his mother, Kay Freshman, you may know from different foundations. And their organization has a real strong reputation for this kind of work. They sometimes get involved and are more active, but that is in redesigning schools, but that's not what we're asking. We're just asking for kind of a short-term, come in, assess what you see, offer the headmaster and the school, the teachers, and the other administrators, an assessment of what you see to help Mr. Fiatto and his team kind of figure out what the direction is for our high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, you know, the only other item on the agenda for tonight is that our October school committee is going to be on October 8th. This is a slight change, I think, from before. We also need to discuss, as we discussed in June of last year, and I'm hoping, Mr. Mayor, you can lead kind of the group in this discussion right now, about where we want to hold these meetings. We do recognize that our central office space right now has been a little bit tied up and that we may be moving. And so it's possible it could have, the school committee could take place at the Family Welcome Center. If that does open in October, it may be more advisable to have it in schools for the first few months. I'm not sure, but as I said, in June, I want to make sure that the school committee kind of weighs in. What do you guys feel most comfortable with? Where do you want to meet? What's the format? It certainly could be here, it could be on tour.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's been working is going out to the schools in a way, and that allows us to showcase it, but I'm interested in what the committee says.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Mariana?
Superintendent, I believe on that original schedule that we did way back last year, I think we were scheduled for the Gilmet in October.
Yeah.
So could we, could we go to Gilmet?
I, my recommendation is to stay with that for now, but I think after the Gilmet, it was still kind of wide open, wasn't it?
Well, I think after the Gilmet, we were going back to central office for November, and then December, another school.
Yeah.
I remember there was some good natured ribbing between committee members of each district and all that stuff.
We'll need a Frost after we go to central office.
Frost after the central office?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think, you know, Mr. Mayor, I would you have...
That works. So it's like Gilmet in October, the central office in November, and then the Frost in December. Love to have the table motion that way, that way we just got that.
Motion.
Motion's been made. The second, second all was in favor. I guess that's it.
Okay, we did, it's Gilmet.
October Gilmet, November central office, December Frost. Maybe we'll get some catalog.
And just a reminder that the October meeting's moved to Wednesday, if that's not wrong.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday.
My understanding has been moved to Wednesday, October 8th? Is that correct? Instead of Thursday, October 8th, yes?
Correct.
Can I ask why?
Yeah, that's what I said.
I think it was a scheduling issue. We just tried to get to work on some people's schedules.
Okay, because more than likely that might not work for me. But if it works for everybody else...
Yeah, let's circle back. If you have an issue with the Wednesday for this, let us know. See what we can do, but I think... That's what I thought, right? So we'll see right now, Thursday, that Thursday doesn't work, that Wednesday doesn't work for everybody. Let's see, we can announce something to everybody.
I just think that...
All right? What can we do?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so we have any items that you have on your document? Otherwise, we're going to move to public participation.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody else has any. Can we just get some, some information around the census of all the teachers? How many teachers we have? How many new teachers we have? We saw a lot of great men, spoke to new teachers, a lot of bright, exciting young faces there. Just wanted to see, just some information around how many teachers we target.
Yeah, we can certainly get you that information for the October meeting. I think one of the, one of the positive points about some of our hires, we have a lot of former Lawrence High students who have gone through college and are coming back to work at the city school. We will get that information to you.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor? And Mr. Mariana?
Yes, also, for at least the next meeting, if we could get some information around our pregnancy rates. Like I remember, before we would get to the, like, chart, that kind of mapped it out almost throughout the year. So I'm just to know sort of what happened last year and the last few years.
Yes, I will look into getting you that information. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, moving to public participation. I believe we have one person for public participation. Mr. Marley, are you here? Welcome.
Good evening, honorable members. With the beginning of this year, great year, our citizens thanking Honorable Commissioner Chester and Honorable Superintendent Riley for the best success of our public schools. Turner on the land is moving Lawrence Public School to be the best public school in our nation. But our job as a citizen continues, support of our children and wonderful teachers and their union, with the man of... We demand of you as our elected official to support our teachers and their union. Mister Mendez from Lawrence High on a disability, we must know 83,000 citizens are behind you and we support you. With the best wishes of positive accomplishment for our children, our teachers, and staff, let's move Lawrence Public School in the new year forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Moving to adjournment, Mr. Mayor. Any final thoughts from the group before we adjourn? We'll ask if you close it out, sir.
I understand we're supposed to adjourn. Motion. Second of all, is a favorite?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. We'll see you in October.